Good evening, and welcome to the Lompoke City Council Meeting. We have a report on action taken during closed session.
Well, since there was no closed session actually held, I don't have anything to report.
I just want, you know, I just want to get my money's worth out of you. And this evening for our invocation Pastor Bernie Fetterman, if you'd all please rise.
Dear God, on behalf of our city and our leaders, we pause to offer gratitude for your blessings and your grace upon our lives. I stand here certain that all that is good comes from your hand and your heart. And sometimes we convince ourselves the great things in life are our doing, and we fail to give you credit. So I would like to say thank you, God, for your goodness. For not only this town and this evening, this meeting before us, but for our freedoms that we celebrate this coming week. Thank you for allowing us to live in this land that we often take for granted until we realize so many in the world have so little, and some have no freedom at all. So I say, "Thank you, God." Help our community to celebrate, to be safe, to be sane, protect them, and watch over our police and our fire personnel as they continue to watch over us. Be with our mayor, our city administrator, our council, the staff, be with our fire chief, and be with our police department, especially in these days of transition. And I pray for our new police chief, whomever he or she might be, that you lead our leaders to the right person, guide our leaders this night and in the future, to perceive what is right, and the courage to pursue it, and the strength to accomplish it. We commend all these things into your hand, and thank you for your goodness. May we be one nation, one city, under you. Amen.
Could you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Administrator Status Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I really just wanted to take this moment tonight to remind and encourage our citizens concerning the upcoming Independence Day celebration holiday. First of all, we hope everybody has fun and keeps in mind the purpose of the celebrations. The admonition is certainly the one over concern over fire issues that go on in our community, and particularly the use and misuse of fireworks, including illegal fireworks that are not considered safe and sane. These are very serious matters, and certainly I have some concerns over that, and I know it's shared by a number of people. So we hope in your celebrations that you're responsible in your celebrations. We remind you that the safe and sane fireworks are the only ones that are legal, and that those are legal on the night of July 4th up till 10:00 PM, and not on any other days. And for illegal fireworks, those things that shoot into the sky, or explode, or all the above, those are prohibited altogether. We do have additional patrols out, and each night up through, including and past the 4th of July. It is not our desire to issue citations and extract fines from the citizens, but we are serious about our enforcement, because your neighbors deserve to have an enjoyable holiday and not one that is endangered by, you know, illegal activity. And so we just encourage everyone's cooperation and observation of what the right rules are in that regard, and hopefully we won't have to issue too many citations. Unfortunately, we already have done so, and as I said, we continue to patrol. So that's going to conclude my report.
Thank you. Oral Communications, this is your opportunity to talk to us about any subject. If you are here for an item that's on the agenda tonight, and you can wait till that item comes up, and it's not going to be very far away, please do so.
Ken Austin, Lompoke Valley Chamber of Commerce and Judiciary Bureau, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My monthly update. On the 4th of June, I attended the Allen Hancock Public Safety Training Center grand opening planning meetings that are ongoing. That same evening, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Volunteer Recognition Award Ceremony at the Boys and Girls Club. A nice evening, quite a crowd of folks that participated in helping the Boys and Girls Club. On the 9th of June, I attended the Allen Hancock Foundation Board Meeting, something I'm working hard to try and get more members on that foundation from the Lompoke area. And outside of Santa Maria, right now, it's about 90% in Santa Maria, and scattered after that, so working to get more folks from our area involved in that foundation. 10th of June, again, attended the Vandenberg Air Force Base Newcomers Briefing. Twice a month, I usually attend those when I can always make them. I can't always make them, but I generally do. On the 12th of June, we had our voting for Chambersman and Women of the Year. They will, of course, be announced at our chambered annual dinner on the 23rd of July. Hopefully, you all can make that. That same day, at lunchtime, attended the National Association of Retired Federal Employees' monthly luncheon at the Els Lodge. The topic was senior abuse and fraud, which is a very interesting topic, and a worthwhile topic for the group. 17th of June, our ongoing meetings for Old Town Market. As you know, that's coming up, starting the 11th of July, a couple weeks, so we're going. So we're continuing to work on that. On the 18th of June, we had a ribbon cutting at Meridian of Lompoke for Assisted Living, a great event, good turnout of folks there. I think many of you, at least a couple of the council members were there. On that same afternoon, Boys and Girls Club Community Council Meeting, attended that. Again, the same, same day, Allen Hancock Public Safety Training Grand Opening Meeting. And again, that grand opening for the public, if you aren't already aware, is on the 2nd of August. And one of the final meetings is going to be held tomorrow, actually, in Santa Maria for that. So that's coming up. Remember that mark on your calendar if you don't have it. The 2nd of August is the general public meeting. There'll be a VIP grand opening on the 31st, which many of you will probably get invitations to that, I'm sure. I'm not in charge of invitations, so. On the 19th, we had our chamber luncheon, a great topic. The DA's office from Santa Barbara came up and spoke about workers' comp fraud. It was such a good topic and very interesting to many of the folks there. We're probably going to do a follow-on seminar, probably in the early fall, and would probably like to try and do that here at City Hall, because I think it could draw quite a crowd. Many people were like, "Wow," they learned a lot from it, and there wasn't enough time at one of our luncheons to really do a worthwhile job on the topic. So I think we want to do that again. On that same afternoon, we had a tour bus from O'Reilly Grandi coming to Lompoke to come to the wine ghetto. Fifty folks from the Pomona and O'Reilly Grandi area came down, and Jason Reynolds and I arranged to have them do some wine tasting at four different wineries, and then end up at one winery at Montamar, where they tasted, and then also had food arranged there. They had an awesome time. I mean, I had so many people come up to me and thank us for putting this together, that they definitely want to come back again. I think many of them will come back on their own, not just in a tour bus like this, but it was an awesome event. And many of them didn't even realize that Lompoke had wineries, and especially the wine ghetto. And I go, "You went to four wineries. You've just barely scratched the surface." So I think we have a good start with that group, and I'm sure they'll spread the word, because all the comments were outstanding comments about that event. On the 20th of June, we had a ribbon cutting for Jolene's Beauty Salon over on I Street, used to be Odile's. Many of you are aware of that. Recently changed hands, and Jolene is now the new owner and in business. On the 21st of June, had the opportunity to attend the retirement ceremony for Bob Hatch, the CEO of the Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce. Truly a great night. Bob's a tremendous person, tremendous chamber CEO, and a good friend. He'll be missed in the business, but he's done a great job for Santa Maria, and did for Lompoke for a short period of time prior to that. 23rd of June, attended the Lompoke Pops, and the last event for the Maestro, fantastic. It's been a few years since I've been to a Lompoke Pops. It was really, it was excellent. I really enjoyed that very much, so. But that was his last, his last night. 24th of June, attended the Change of Command Ceremony for the 30th Mission Support Group Commander Colonel Davis at Vandenberg. Mr. Wyman Miller and I went out together and attended that. That evening, took part in the Beautification Awards with the Beautification Commission. There's flowers, yard contests, and our I Love Lompoke program. So hopefully, we can do more. This is the first time we've teamed up to do something. We plan to do some more things in the fall, and probably something around Christmas time, but I think we've developed a good partnership, and Cody and Boy and his staff have been outstanding, as well as the rest of the members of the Beautification Commission. So it was a great event. For Flower Festival, we had our kiosk down there. I mean, if you were there, you probably saw it. It had flowers all over it, thanks to Home Depot, who donated all the flowers. I had to return them. They were a little bit, a little bit worn out, but not, not too bad. But Tim down there is real good about stuff like that, so we had to decorate it, had a lot of brochures and flyers, and a lot of them went, so that, the people were obviously picking things up, and I think that was a good addition. We're going to do that more often for events, like the dog show, and the Piper Club flying, and things like that. We're going to have that kiosk out there with information and things like that, so. On the 27th of June, I attended the Workforce Investment Board Youth Council Retreat at Kachuma, in planning for the next year for the, for the youth council and events. They're, they're the group that helps organize the job fairs that we've done. So I know you're familiar with that, so that's part of the planning, but there's a lot more to that group than just job fairs. Today, attended the retirement ceremony for the 30th Space Wing Vice Commander Colonel MacArthur. Fantastic ceremony, just a true, a true gentleman and a great leader. He'll be sorely missed in the community, but he's going on to bigger and better things, and will be able to spend more time with his family. So it was very, very much appreciated attending that. With that said, I'd like to also wish everybody a happy and safe 4th, and remember that on Friday the 4th, our Military Affairs Committee will be holding a function at Centennial Park, 11:30, with the kids' bike parade, starting from Memorial Building, coming down to the park, and they'll circle the park a few times, and they're decorated up and dressed up, and we'll have some patriotic music, and there'll be some food out there. Just kind of a, a good time, so bring your lawn chair and sit back for a couple hours, relax, and enjoy, hopefully, a sunny, beautiful day, and celebrate our 4th, our independence. That's it. Yes, sir.
What is going on in working with the 10th anniversary of Sideways? I know you're working on some of the people in San Antonio.
Well, it's kind of interesting, because everyone is kind of doing their own thing, and, and which I guess is okay. So I've been working with Jason Reynolds and a couple of the wineries, and we're gonna, we haven't got anything together yet, but we're starting to put some plans together to meet, and talk about what we want to do for Lompoke, because every community's kind of doing their own thing. The kickoff will be in Santa Barbara. There'll be a special showing, I believe, on October 4th of the Sideways movie. But again, every community's kind of doing their own thing. Some are celebrating it for weeks, some are doing one day, some are doing, we'll probably do like a weekend kind of thing in, in Lompoke, so. But the details aren't out yet. That's exactly what we're going to do.
I know a lot of people don't realize there's new people in town at five of the scenes in Sideways in the city of Lompoke, so I mean, it, there's a lot of that, so we, we've got some things we can prove, too, so. It is 10-year anniversary, and like, a lot of people say, "Wow, it's 10 years," but you got to realize the kids that were 12 years old are now 22. And if they see that movie, which is playing two or three times a year nationwide, then they know where the ghetto is, they know where the wine industry is. So it's a major advertising for the wine industry.
And the theme is Sideways Then, Sideways Now, and, and things have changed. Throughout the area where this was held, things have changed dramatically, so we're going to promote Lompoke and things now versus things then, because if they look for the Buonvolence, they'll never find it.
Yep. Okay. All right. You. Who's next?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Frank Campus, resident of Lompoke. I serve on the Public Safety Commission, and I had the opportunity this Saturday to participate in the Lompoke Parade, and it was, I got to ride our brand-new brush truck. And I want to say, I know the city allocated funds a couple years ago to purchase that. I think we got our money's worth, and it's, it's well going to see a lot of use. Of course, it's bumpy right now, because it's empty, but the chief assured me, once they put all the equipment on there, it'll be a smooth ride. So that was nice, and it's, this thing is so big, it sets above our ladder truck. That's how tall it is. It's like you had to get a step ladder to get inside of it. So our next hope is to maybe get another ladder truck to bring our old one in reserve. That'll bring down some of our insurance rates, but that's maybe down the road. But a second item I want to talk to you about is, I'm also the commander of the Disabled American Veterans Chapter here in Lompoke, and it was brought to my attention at our last meeting two weeks ago, that there is a World War I memorial, and it is right next to the museum on South 8th Street. And it's, it's in utter disrepair. It needs to be some work done on it. And with the centennial of World War I occurring in less than four years, I think it'd be nice if we can maybe get some funding down the road to take care of that. I believe it's on city property, that's why I bring it to your attention. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. Okay, I'm going to try to play beat the clock. I have a sedated dog at home. I'm Debbie Argyle Bastian, and I'm, I'm here to, number one, thank you for all that you do, and, secondly, I'm going to thank the two council members that voted with the fire chief, because that's why the dog is sedated. They're already going off in my neighborhood. But I'm sorry that I was sick the night that you discussed the fireworks, but I'm here now, and I just wanted to quickly say that if it wasn't brought up at that time, I only have one copy of this, but it's a good idea for perhaps next year. I know the ship has sailed this year, but if the topic didn't come up about combat veterans returning, at my home right now, I have two staying with me that were friends of my sons. They're visiting from Florida, one with 10 tours and one with 12 tours. They're going to leave the city morning, Friday morning. They said the whistling ones are, are the worst, so they're leaving for overnight to get away from it. But this is what some of the cities are doing for their veterans, and next year, if we want to do something like this, I think it's a good idea. It's a, it's just a yard sign that says, "Combat Veteran Lives Here. Please Be Courteous With Fireworks." So I'm not sure if, if that entered the discussion at all, our veterans and what this does to them, but from 9:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night is a very long time. So anyway, I thank you for your time, and thanks once again for all you do. I'm going home to the dog now.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this time?
Can you hand these out? That's a good idea.
Good evening, Council. My name is Richard King. I work, I live in 535 North I Street in Lompoke, and my concerns is with Collican High. Last year, in February, there was a person killed in the morning, and that's because of the crosswalk. The crosswalk there is very dangerous. Last Sunday, my boy and I were coming home from Bonds in the afternoon, and I was, we were in the center section of the crosswalk, and some driver went through the crosswalk. This has been going, ongoing since I've been there. I've been living there for five years, 11 years, and this has been going on off and on. I've had called several times the police department to find out if they're going to be doing anything about changing the, the crossing area of this area. I would like to suggest that they can put a push button with a flasher like they have in Santa Maria, they have in front of the, uh, City Hall, and if you please could look into it, and this is very dangerous during the school year. I talked to Mr. Starbuck on several occasions about it, and we sit there, we were there talking about the incident last year. So this is going to get worse if they don't get it changed. So I gave you some information on the vehicle code. I got a book yesterday, and if you can talk to your people who can change that. That's the second one. You can give this to them. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're not up to your number yet.
No.
Uh, it's just a, okay. You can talk if you want, but we're going to come around to you in about three minutes.
Okay. I was just here just to basically ask the city to end the contract of Promenade Taxi, because they've abandoned the area.
Hey, why don't you come back and talk about that, because I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you on that. City Administrator, you know, one thing occurs to me with regard to this intersection of I Street, and that we had the one death there in the wee hours of the morning. We're out changing lights right now. Could we maybe put one of the new LED lights on that pole, since we're changing them anyway? That would at least help at night. And I have to tell you personally, when I drive down College at night, I don't know what it is about the lighting in that area, but I have, it's just difficult. I try to avoid it at night. It's the shortest way to the Boy Scout meeting, but I usually go a different way.
Yeah, it's something we can accomplish.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. For the consent calendar this evening, we have the approval of minutes of the meeting of June 17th. We have approval of expenditures, a payroll voucher for 1.1 million, voucher register for 557,000, a voucher register for 570,000, utility refunds of $2,785, electronic payments of 2,875,000. Those are principally our CalPERS and our insurance payments, and our payment for our electricity, manual checks of $1,500, and I will not participate in the vote on check number 320337 for $18.63 to Lompoke Lock &amp; Safe. And item number three, approval of the agricultural lease for unimproved land at River Park. And I want to personally thank Kevin McKeown, the Public Works Director, for going out and chasing this down, getting it solved. We've owned that land for eons and never collected rent on it, and after, I pointed it out to the city administrator when he came on the job, Kevin got after it, so good job. Is there any item a council member would like to pull? Seeing none, accept a motion for approval.
I move we accept the consent calendar.
And a second?
A second.
Don't everybody go at once. Okay. And is there any discussion? Could we vote, please? That passes four, zero, and one absent. And now we'll come to item number four, the application for certificate of convenience and necessity and taxicab owner's permit for Joanne Newell, DBA Joe's Taxi. City Administrator, who's going to present on this?
Ms. Galavan is going to.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, audience, and viewers. Pursuant to the Lompoke Municipal Code, we ask that you hold a public hearing and take oral testimony on this item, that you find the public convenience and necessity shall be provided by the operation of Joe's Taxi, and based on the attached investigation report to the staff report, that you find the applicant is fit, willing, and able to provide the proposed service, and that you direct staff to issue a taxicab owner's permit to Ms. Newell, doing business as Joe's Taxi, to operate a taxicab service. And Ms. Newell is here this evening to address council and answer any questions as well.
Customer Starbuck?
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm trying to find an answer to a, a couple of years ago, we denied a cab company to come to Lompoke. Do you remember why?
I don't have that historical reference.
I couldn't find it.
I know the answer to that, but who wants to chime in? The applicant failed to show up two meetings in a row.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Newell, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Joanna Newell, and I've been a resident here in Lompoke for the last four, about 40 years now. I was a previous driver for Promenade Cab Company, and there was an opportunity to where I decided that I could provide the same service as a cab driver, only doing it on my own, as my own businessperson. I really enjoy the time that I am a cab driver. It's a, a service that, that the citizens in Lompoke, they, they do need, and it's just something that I've been, I, I enjoy it, and it's something that I still want to do as my own company. So, do I stay up here for questions?
You stay. We'll get, I know there's some questions. Were you first? Oh, one of you did. Councilor Lingle.
Thank you. Ms. Newell, you said you, you want to be here to provide a service, and the community needs a service.
Uh-huh.
Being, you said you were a driver for Promenade.
Uh-huh.
Tell me, in your opinion, why the city needs a service? We have the Lompoke Taxi, we have Promenade. Why do we need a third company?
The people of Lompoke, they, I'm, I know that they want other options, other types of, of, they, they want other options of the type of service that they can get, the cars that they could drive in, the hours of operation, things like that.
Okay, because...
And also, too, I, I, through my experience with my, you know, the years I've been a taxi driver, I've had a really strong customer base with businesses and with residents, so that's how I know that.
Okay, because one of the things we look at when we're approving this is whether, whether it's convenient and necessary.
Uh-huh.
From what I'm hearing from you, it's convenient. People want the options.
Uh-huh.
But I still haven't heard why it's actually necessary with two other cab companies.
Well, I'm able to do really late-night rides, and I can provide a car that's different than what's already available, things like that.
Okay. Now, that's what I want to hear, because now unless, anyone is here from Lompoke Taxi, but I do not believe they operate 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So that is a convenience that you're offering.
Yeah. And then I also can, I, I can do reservation calls, things like that. I, I am available for wine tours, so I can represent our wine ghetto and all that.
Okay. Would you, your permit would just be for the Lompoke city limits?
Right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would it go into, like Vandenberg Village?
Um, that's a Santa Barbara County permit thing. There's possibility of it in the future, but right now, I'm, I'm here for all the citizens of Lompoke.
Just within the city limits?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Joanne? Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's not that easy.
Yeah.
Um, you were driving for Promenade. Could you share with us why you're not driving with them anymore?
Um, it's to my understanding that they sold the company, and there were also indications that it, it might be good if I went and, you know, tried to do it on my own. But they, they sold the company, which means that I, you know, I was out of a job, and then if, in order for them to do anything else, they have a new owner, so he would have to start all over again, and I'm out of a job, so that's why I decided I can do this by myself.
And do you know who the new owner is?
Uh, the new owner?
Yeah.
It's somebody named Rick.
When did that take place?
I, I'm not sure.
I mean, last month, a couple months ago?
Yeah.
Recently?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, one more? Sir, go ahead.
So they're under new ownership. Are they, to the best of your knowledge, is Promenade still providing service in the city of Lompoke?
I have no clue. I haven't, I haven't really been in, you know, getting information from anybody since, it must have been January. In fact, I didn't know that he was selling until just recently, so.
Okay. I don't know if there's anyone else that'd like to speak on it, because I've been told, but I have not confirmed it, that they are no longer providing services in the city of Lompoke.
It's, that's supposedly my understanding, but I'm, I don't, I'm not sure.
Right now, it's just, just, it's, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else this time? Thanks, Joanne. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, who is providing services, and if they're not providing, there's only one.
Nobody right now, just Lompoc Taxi.
Lompoc Taxi.
Yeah.
I seen him smoking a cigarette in his today, his car or something.
Mr. Nobody's here, we'll get him in a minute. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Joanne. Okay, now I'd like to open this for all communications. This is your opportunity to come and talk to us. Now, Ed.
Hi, I'm Ed Utter, I own Lompoc Taxi. I'm basically here to talk about Promenade and the fact that they, three years ago, they made a lot of promises and they met none of them. I can go into some very detailed stories, but basically, they just weren't good neighbors. The only good thing they did was hire Joanne. She has been a very good neighbor, and I wish her luck in her endeavor. And I just wanted the city to know that Promenade did abandon the city, and Joanne's probably been the only taxi driver for almost a year for them, and then, of course, they abandoned her. I would hope that the city ends their contract on your end so that they don't sneak back in in some way, because they, like I said, there's no room for, there's barely enough room for two. I mean, I'll say she, she did okay as an entity, as one person entity. A whole nother company, there's just not enough room, and they were bad neighbors anyway, so that's all.
Councilmember Starbuck?
How many cabs do you operate?
Four.
Four, all the time, or?
Yeah, well, they're, basically, we always have two drivers on duty and a third driver on call, and it's very easy to, we've got actually a really receptive crew right now, so it's really easy to get that fourth car out, so. And as far as hours of operation, we're 24 hours on Friday and Saturday nights, and then we're, we're, our bar closing all the rest of the nights in 6:00 AM or in the morning. And then if somebody, if somebody needs to leave, like town during our closed hours, and they arrange it ahead of time, we do that also.
Do you provide a county run out to the village, Mission Hills? Do you have the permit for the county?
We do take care of the Mission Hills and the village and the base, so, yeah. Yeah.
Ed, how long ago did Promenade stop running calls in Lompoc?
January.
January?
Yeah.
And do you know who the new owner is?
I, as much information as she has, Rick. I do know he lives on the corner of Rygel and, he lives on Rygel on a corner. He's always got two, at least two cars parked outside, so. Yeah, that's the new owner, right, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Who'd like to speak next? Come on down. The rest of you, if you didn't fill out a card, it's okay, as long as you remember who your name is.
My name is Nancy Redd. I'm a partial owner of The Hair Factory here in town. Joanne has been my personal taxi cab driver now for three years. She picks someone I trust with my grandchildren, she's very reliable. When my car breaks down, she comes to my job and picks me up, oops, and takes me to, you know, to get my car fixed or whatever, and I really believe that we need this service. I don't call anybody else, and I really would appreciate that she gets approved, because without her, since January, I haven't had a person to call. So, I mean, I trust with my kids, she's really reliable, and that's with my granddaughter, but she doesn't want to speak, but she gets, she gets rides from her. She goes to private school. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joanne. Here Nancy. Who's next? Come on down. Don't be bashful.
Hi, my name is Patricia Isbell. I live at Teneaway West Nictorine Avenue, and I met Joanne, Joanne a few years ago, and I've seen her caring, and I've seen her integrity, and I've, I know she's a very safe driver, and I was a professional driver at one time too, so I support her 100%, and I hope she can get her business going. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, everybody. My name's Jack Carmin, citizen of Lompoc, born and raised, and thank you to the council and staff for giving us your consideration. I want to speak in support of granting whatever permissions are necessary for Ms. Newell to operate her company. To speak to convenience and necessity, I think both of those are somewhat obvious. We have a high population of seniors that need rides, bus doesn't go everywhere, we have lots of one-car families. We all know why cabs are useful, so serving these populations, I think, is important, and I know for sure that Joanne is capable of it, having been a customer for many years. I also think the necessity for DUI prevention is a good part of the package along with enforcement, speaks well to having taxis readily available anytime, night or day. So, I think this would be a good part of a total transit package that the city deserves along with public transit, bicycles, and people's individual cars. I also believe that with the increase in nightlife and live music and entertainment in the downtown area that we are anticipating with the opening of the Lompoc Theater, among other things, we need to be prepared to serve the present needs as well as the future needs that we are all advocating for. So, if we can serve the present needs and be ready for the future, I think we'd be doing well to promote a culture in which everybody knows that a cab is an option, for whatever reason, whether it's coming home from the hospital, coming home from the bar, walking home late at night, whatever it takes. And to speak to her fitness and willingness and ableness, I would add beloved to that. We all love Joanne, and we always have. So, I would encourage you to let this experienced professional to fulfill the entrepreneurship that we all encourage and open this small business in this small town. I think it's an essential service that we should absolutely do whatever we can to encourage. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, my name is Mark Johnson. I've been resident for 26 years, two years now. Grew up in Lompoc. I've worked in the bars seen in Lompoc for about two years. Working there, I've seen a lot of people leave the bar intoxicated, impatient, they have either sober driver, or they walk home, or they try to drive, they get DUIs in front of the bar, they leave the bar, get DUIs. And, you know, on my phone, I call up a taxi if they need one, or we provide for them a taxi. And sometimes, Lompoc Taxi is booked. And then when Joe was working at Promenade, I mean, I was able to call her, and she's usually not packed, and so if there's actually another taxi in town, I mean, that would help people make a decision to pay nine bucks for a taxi instead of another like $10,000 for a DUI, and then that goes on their job title, and that affects their work ethic, even all the other stuff that adds on to that. So, if, I mean, I've gotten rides from Joe too, past few years, off and on, and she has a good client base in Lompoc. A lot of people know her, a lot of people just, I mean, it's not she has the real deal back up. So, I mean, if you guys could grant her a possibility to do her job, I mean, it would actually be useful, and like the other guy said about the theater, I mean, with the nightlife growing up or building up, there's going to be more activity, more people out. When people, and they're on the nightlife, people are impatient, I mean, when you have alcohol in your system, when I work at a bar, you say you can't make a right judgment if you're over X amount of drinks. I mean, when people walk home, people drive, people make those mistakes. And so, I mean, if there's other options out there for these young people trying to do their nightlife thing, I mean, they have more of an option to still have fun and be responsible than if they feel impatient by a taxi company being booked. And especially with the alcohol in your system, your sense of time is off. It could be like five minutes, but you think it's like 15, and then you get impatient, you drive or do something harmful, you might hurt somebody, you might not. So, there's, I mean, there's like, it doesn't hurt to actually have one more or two more people out there if they're willing to make the time for other people and start a business for themselves, I mean, so that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Julie Snaringer, council, city staff. Resident of Lompoc 16 years now, and I would like you to approve this permit for Joe's Taxi so that we have options. We have zero public transport options after 6:00 PM, during the dinner hour, during the bar hour. We need multiple options, I think, just to support the entire community, support, especially giving people options not to drink and drive. And to be fair, I would like a little bit of competition, just to make sure our prices don't go up on our taxi rates. And so, I would like to make sure that we maintain just a little bit of competition there for the benefit of the customers. I also, you know, the, as far as Joanne herself, I have used her when she was with Promenade. I found her very professional, I found her prompt, honest, very direct as far as when she was going to be able to pick you up, and very courteous. So, she would be a great business asset to the community.
Thank you. We won't eat you, it'll be okay.
Hi, my name is Danette Marsh. I am a Lompoc native, and I am also a server at Divine Wine Bar &amp; Bistro. As a server, I take with compassion the care of our guests that come in and at, late at night when we close, if there is anyone who is highly intoxicated, where we have cut off, or I feel it's not a good idea, maybe I suspect they will drive when they tell me they won't. And on top of that, calling Lompoc Taxi and them not coming through on time, she was always available, like, and she always gave me an estimated time when she would be there. I'll be there in 20 minutes, I'm right around the corner, I've got to do this, and I'll be there, you know? So, it gave me information that I could then give the guests of Divine. So, they didn't leave, you know? So, I please, please approve this. She's awesome, and she is a savior. She's an angel, and many, many guests have called her that, so that's all.
Thank you. Last chance, anyone else? Going once? Going twice? No. Especially you. Back to council. Okay. So, I, before we had this meeting, I asked the city attorney a couple of questions with regard to our taxi franchises, and one of them was, under what circumstances that franchise could be canceled? And I would like you to share with the council your response to me, please.
Certainly, Mayor. The municipal code provides for those permits to be able to revoked if there's been some criminal activity on the person who owns the permit, either a felony or misdemeanor that results in moral turpitude. So, unless there's some evidence of that, there isn't a provision in the municipal code that allows a permit to be revoked.
And then I asked you the question about change of ownership, and you said?
If the corporation is the owner of the permit, and the corporation is sold as a corporation, then the permit would go with the corporation. If the permit is owned by an individual, as if this permit's granted, it would be owned by sole proprietorship, then if that sole proprietorship were to be sold, that new owner would have to get a new permit, and if it was a partnership and the partnership changed, that partnership would also have to get a new permit.
I don't think I asked you the last question, which is whether Promenade was a corporation or DB, or an individual.
I, I don't know.
I doubt Mr. Lingle remembers, it was a long time ago. Okay. So, I think we would all like you to, for you to find that out and act accordingly. I made a phone call yesterday to Promenade's number, because I had been told by someone that they no longer service Lompoc, and I said, I'm at Lompoc City Hall, and I need to go to, I think I told them Embassy Suites, and they said, oh, we're not doing any crosstown runs in Lompoc. So, they are in fact apparently not servicing Lompoc at this time. And maybe our ordinance is one of those things we need to look at at some point in time, so if we have someone that abandons us, we can abandon them. I know the city administrator needs one more thing to do. He's ignoring me, it's okay.
Just on that topic, Mayor, if I can, it's just important to, you know, that we're sensitive to how this information might come to the city. You know, unless we have a proactive way of, like, re-upping licenses every year, two years, then we're basically sitting there. We haven't been presented, for instance, with the change in ownership on the existing cab company. So, how the information comes to us becomes an important consideration as well.
Now, you got two things to figure out. Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments. I appreciate entrepreneurship. I think it's, it's needed, it's part of free enterprise. Do I think you're going to run Lompoc Taxi out of business? Certainly not. I think that it certainly merits an approval on my vote. I would like to say something real quick off of this subject. Thank you, Mark the Bouncer, for getting me in to see Molly Ringwald the other night under the chain.
Just, just in the, in the spirit of full disclosure, I have known Joanne for a very, very, very long time, and I've always found her to be a wonderful and reputable person, so I'm sure that plays some teeny amount in my decision. Councilmember Hamdul?
No, I'm real pleased to hear the people here talking about businessperson wanting to get into business, the young lady too. It's nice to have that, and the competition is good, and I think if the two working together and both inside the city, it sounds like the other one we have, it's not part of the city anymore, and I think it sounds like his cars are out in the village, but I think that we may have to go back and look at our licensing to make sure there's an update every two years or something, so we know who's really in there, so. But I'm really pleased to hear this, what I've heard tonight, and also that the number of people are here to support, and that means you're doing a good job. As a businessperson, you're, you're bringing that business to everybody else.
Okay. I don't see any lights on, so I'd accept a motion.
I'll be glad to move the recommendation.
And a second.
A second.
And is there any other discussion on this? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? That passes four, zero, and one absent. Don't everybody get up yet, because we still have a little more fun left? No, it's not. Yeah, we don't normally allow clapping, but this is a special occasion. Okay, written communications, city clerk?
Nothing.
Oral communications, this is your last chance to talk to us for two minutes. Anybody want to talk about something? Going once? Going twice? Gone. Council requests, comments, meeting reports. Wayne, why don't you start this?
Yeah, I just have a couple. I didn't talk on it in a consent calendar, but the approval of the agricultural lease. The interesting thing about, I'm glad it's done, I think there's an assumption on councils in the past, it had been done, it got properly, it should have been paying rent, and I'm glad to see that we're able to use it in the right place too, so if we have any more farm ground out there, we may want to do that. So, I'm real pleased on that one. And the only other thing, I was at the parade, like everybody else, we're either in it or watching it, and we had been both, so. The parade took good, very good. I had a lot of excellent comments about Flower Festival Parade, as I seen places saw, and the attendance at the park seemed to be real good when I went down there.
Do you pass that to the city attorney? Councilmember Lingle, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're making a circle. We'll circle back to you.
On the 18th of last month, I attended a meeting at the Lompoc Veterans Memorial Building as a member of the Committee to Restore that building. On the 20- On the 25th and 26th, as in Roseville, on city business for the Northern California Power Agency, the city did pay my expenses for a night's lodging and transportation. I used my own vehicle, they trade, paid me mileage. And then on the Saturday, the 28th, I also was in, or attended the Rose Bowl, Rose Bowl Parade, yeah. The Flower Festival Parade.
Councilmember Lingle, fresh start back?
Yeah, I know.
Are you okay tonight, Mayor?
No, no, I'm not, no.
Just, just a couple of shout-outs real fast, I just wanted to say to the Flower Festival Association, what a great coronation, congratulations to all the queens, queen candidates, they did a, just a marvelous job representing us to the, to the Pasadena Rose Bowl judges. I got to say Flower Festival, I had a blast, always do, I make my own parties sometimes, but it's always fun. And please be careful with safe and sane fireworks and don't let your neighbors do the illegals if you want to keep the privilege. Thank you.
Ditto. We have a great town and we all look out for each other and some people need a little more looking out for. So if you have a neighbor or a friend or a family member who's contemplating launching some illegal fireworks, be, be your brother's keeper and speak to them, because it's a lot cheaper for you to talk to them than them to get a $1,000 fine. And that's what it is for illegal fireworks, it's a $1,000 fine. Okay, I need to request two agenda items. Oh, is it 1,500? Got worse. I need to request two agenda items, the first one is on behalf of the League of Cities, which is to select our annual voting delegate, and this would need to be on the agenda for our next meeting, because the action has to be taken before July 31st. So I'd be looking for a second and a third for that.
I'll second.
I'll third. Okay, there's that one. The second item, we still have the house at 1128 North A Street that we have invested in and followed up on, and it's still boarded up and we just paved and mowed the weeds yet again for another year. Have you had any contact from anybody, Joe? I think it's time to move forward with administrative receivership, get the place cleaned up, sold, get some money back to the people, to the heirs of the lady that owned the house and get, make that mess go away. It's, it's been on, on the council's agenda since I started thinking about running for council in April of 2008. So I think that's long enough. So I would like to have an agenda item at the discretion of the city administrator to establish an administrative receivership and begin the process on 1128 North A Street. And I'd be looking for a second and a third.
I'll second.
I'll third.
Okay. Just a couple of quick announcements, there was a press release from the city of Fresno with regard to the HERO program, and so I did a little backwards calculating. Fresno is about 7.8, we're about 7.8% of the size of the city of Fresno, which means over the next two years, the HERO program in Lompoc should generate about $4.368 million in repair work on homes and generate 21 full-time jobs. So if you need repair work to your home, please go to heroprogram.com. We're getting very close to where we'll be able to do that and local contractors will be handling it. I had the same charge that Frank had, which was to mention our little hometown 4th of July event. So the kids parade starts, sidewalk parade starts at 11:30 in the Vets Building and goes down to the park. And then we have a little chance for the kids to parade around and get some, some awards for it. And then we have the concert in the park, which is truly a lot of fun. If you haven't been, come on down and there will be food available. I was at the volunteer event with the Boys and Girls Club and it was amazing to see the number of volunteers that make their program work over the course of the year. I agree with Dirk, the Queen's coronation is two hoots and a holler and we really appreciate the judges from the Tournament of Roses coming. I was at the opening, re-grand opening for Meridian of Lompoc, they've done a beautiful job of refurbishing the old building, I think it was formerly the Lodge of Lompoc, and it's great. Today at Colonel MacArthur's Retirement at Vandenberg, what a stellar individual and unfortunately, he's moving to Arizona, we didn't get to keep him. And then the, the festival parade and the days, I think one of the best parts about is seeing all the people you haven't seen for a year, because they're back here visiting. So there were an amazing number of people who came home to, to our, our hometown event. On behalf of the council and the citizens of Lompoc, I presented a key to the city to Maestro Fernandez at his last concert, and he was the founding concert master of the program and has been our maestro for virtually everyone for 17 years. And I had to go home early that day, because I crashed into the ground earlier in the day for some reason, I don't know. And, but I guess the applause at the end went on and on and on, and a good time was had by all of the party after. And then I had a number of economic development meetings over the course of the last two weeks and some very positive things are coming our way. There is nothing but good news. Anything else from anybody? Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I think you should allow the council to applaud us finishing before 11, before 8 o'clock.
Okay, it's Tuesday. We are therefore adjourned to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM on July 15th, 2014. Thank you for attending.